But it is written that the Lord has poured that upon you. The spirit of deep sleep is a spirit of Satan. And then why should it be written that the Lord has poured it upon them? Any spirit of the enemy or any spirit of Satan can never work in a child of God without the permission of God. Let me give you two examples for that. First of all, before trying the Old Testament, Saint Job. Pisas and the Satan, the Lord's will, gave him permission to get his permission. We see that Satan, before touching Job, first went and got permission from God. The Lord's will gave him permission. The Lord's will gave him permission. Only after the Lord had permitted him, Satan was able to touch Job and his family. Let's read that verse. Job, chapter one, verse twelve. And the Lord said unto Satan, Behold, all that he hath is in thy power; only upon himself put not forth thine hand. So Satan went forth from the presence of the Lord. Just listen to this scripture passage. Satan gave him permission. Satan gave him permission. Only after receiving permission, Satan was able to touch the family of Job. Satan gave him permission. And when the first instance, the Lord gave permission for certain things, whereas he did not permit him to do certain other things. He can touch everything that Job had. His possessions. His livestock. His children. Satan was allowed to touch all these. He was permitted for that. At the same time, he was given another instruction: only upon himself put not forth thine hand. Satan gave him permission. Therefore, in the first temptation, God did not permit Satan to put forth his hand upon Job. At the same time, he had given him permission to put forth his hand upon the children of Job. Next, the second temptation came. Job overcame in the first temptation. The second temptation. Now, the second time, Satan went and asked the Lord for permission to put forth his hand upon Job. He wanted to put forth his hand upon Job. Satan gave him permission. And in the second instance, the Lord had permitted Satan to put forth his hand upon Job, but to save his life alone. Verse four onwards. And Satan answered the Lord and said, Skin for skin, Ay, all that a man had will he give for his life; but put forth thine hand now and touch his bone and his flesh, and he will curse thee to thy face. And the Lord said unto Satan, Behold, he is in thine hand, but save his life. Satan gave him permission. In the second temptation, Satan asked permission of the Lord to put forth his hand upon Job, and only after the Lord had permitted him, he was able to put forth his hand upon Job. Satan gave him permission. In one way, we can say that Satan is a gentleman better than we, children of God. For generally, we never go and ask permission of the Lord for each and everything that we do; we do it according to our self-desire. But it was not so with Satan. And I gave you an example out of the Old Testament; now let me give you an example from the New Testament, the life of Peter. Satan gave him permission. We see that Satan had asked permission of the Lord even when he went to tempt Peter. Jesus himself spoke about this to Peter. Satan hath decided to have you, that he may sift you as wheat. But I have prayed for thee, that thy faith fail not. Luke, chapter twenty-two, verses thirty-one and thirty-two. And the Lord said, Simon, Simon, behold, Satan hath decided to have you, that he may sift you as wheat; but I prayed for thee, that thy faith fail not, and when thou art converted, strengthen thy brethren. Satan gave him permission. Therefore, Satan first has to receive permission of the Lord to deal in the life of the children of God. If Satan gave him permission. Only if the Lord permits Satan to send a spirit of deep sleep upon his children alone, he can send it. Therefore, now we are going to meditate about the spirit of deep sleep. What happens when this spirit enters into many children of God? This spirit hinders a child of God, that he be not be caught up in the secret coming of the Lord. By the incidents that Lord Jesus Christ spoke while he was on this earth, we can understand this fact. In Matthew, chapter twenty-five, the Lord says of an incident about the ten virgins. Out of that, five were wise. And five others were foolish. Matthew, chapter twenty-five, verse one onwards. Glory be to God's holy name. This is a thing which will take place during the tribulation period. In verse six, we read that the bridegroom cometh at midnight. In the scripture, it is not mentioned they are at the time of the arrival of Jesus. At the same time, the second part of his second coming has been mentioned in the scripture. At the end of the first three-and-a-half-year period of tribulation, after the secret coming of Lord Jesus Christ, Lord Jesus Christ will come to gather the tribulation martyrs. We have already meditated these truths clearly under the topic virgins. Here, the wise virgins show the martyrs of the tribulation period. The foolish virgin is the fallen church, which will follow Antichrist. According to Revelations, chapter seventeen, verse three, it is written, "That woman who was seated upon the beast." Here, we see that the rule of Antichrist is a dark period where no man can work. When we say of midnight, it is the middle of the night, that is the end of the first three-and-a-half-year period. When we look into this incident. The wise virgins were prepared. But it is written about the foolish virgins, that they were sleeping as they had the spirit of slumber. What does it mean? They did not have oil. Verse eight. They that were foolish took their lambs and took no oil with them, and the foolish said unto the wise, Give us of your oil for our lambs are gone out. Here, in their lives, they did not have oil. But as they were sleeping. And they were slumbering. What did the Lord say about them? When Jesus comes to gather the tribulation martyrs, they will not be able to make it. Therefore, this is a thing that will take place during the tribulation period. But there is a mystery hidden in it. What is that mystery? These wise people were taking their lambs along with the oil. How did these wise people come to the tribulation period? We see that they took oil and the lamp. Verse four. But the wise took oil in their vessels with their lambs. The wise took oil in their vessels. How come then these wise people came to the tribulation period? The mystery behind that is. While they were living in the dispensation of grace, this oil was not found in their lives. In the dispensation of grace, they slept. In the dispensation of grace, they were slumbering. They had lambs, but they did not have enough oil. They have to gain that oil. Jesus is going to come. He may come at any time. I have to be caught up in a secret coming. Oil is necessary. They did not gain that oil. They did not gather that oil. And they had slept in the dispensation of grace. That was why they were left behind. Now, they have come to the tribulation period. And after they came to this tribulation period, they became alert. We have been left behind in the secret coming of Jesus. We have slept in the dispensation of grace. We were slumbering in the dispensation of grace. We did not gain oil in this dispensation of grace. We did not save oil. Now, only one more chance. One more chance. Within this three-and-a-half-year period, if we do not lead a right life. If we do not die as martyrs for the sake of Jesus. If we sleep in this three-and-a-half-year period. If we give room for slumbering. There won't be any chance of redemption, and we have to go to hell. Here, they slept in the dispensation of grace. As the foolish virgin slept during the tribulation period. As the foolish virgin slept during the tribulation period. Similarly, in this dispensation of grace, they haven't come to the presence of God; oil has got many meanings, and the first meaning is anointing. Second meaning for oil is grace. In different places in the scripture, different meanings have been given for the term oil. This morning, let us take only two meanings. First is anointing, and the second is grace. And this dispensation of grace, you must grow from anointing to anointing. You have to be getting filled in the spirit and be in the spirit. How to gain grace? Who will receive grace? First of all, grace will be found for those who fear the Lord. If a man doesn't fear the Lord, he will lose also the grace which he has. As far as the heaven is from the earth. So far, so great is this mercy toward them that fear him. Psalm one or three, verse eleven. So, if you want to gain grace, you have to fear the Lord. You have to gain fear of God. As long as you keep fearing the Lord alone, grace will abound in you; as it is written, as heaven is high above the earth, so great is this mercy. And second, to the extent we keep on humbling ourselves, grace will be abounding in us. In James, we read, "God resisted the proud, but giveth grace unto the humble." James, chapter four, verse six. But he giveth more grace, wherefore he saith, God resisted the proud, but giveth grace unto the humble. Glory be to God's holy name. God resisted the proud. But giveth grace unto the humble. To the extent that we can, we should keep on humbling ourselves. Next, when we keep on obeying, we will receive that anointing. Acts of opposers, chapter five, verse thirty-two. And we are his witnesses of these things, and so is also the Holy Ghost, whom God had given to them, that obey him. According to the promise of God, that he will pour out a spirit upon all flesh, God is anointing everyone. You would have been anointed twenty years ago. But after receiving the anointing, every day you have to be anointed. In the Old Testament period, we see that David was anointed in various circumstances. Not only the initial days of anointing, but every day we've got to be anointed. We have to grow from anointing to anointing. Therefore, if God has to give us that anointing, first we've got to obey him, we have to obey his word, and then we've got to obey his saints. Glory be to God's holy name. Saul did not obey the words of Samuel. What happened? He lost his anointing. Read first Samuel. In a bird's eye view, we can say that he did not obey the words of a saint. But it was not the personal words of Samuel. It was the word of God. The one who has not obeyed Samuel has not obeyed God. What was the outcome? Those who haven't obeyed the words of the saints have lost their anointing, and instead, an evil spirit comes there. When we obey, we receive the anointing. To receive anointing after anointing, we have got to be okay obeying always. What happens when we show disobedience? And the anointing that we already had departs from us, and the evil spirit that has been sent from the Lord comes upon us. First Samuel, chapter sixteen, verse fourteen. But the spirit of the Lord departed from Saul, and an evil spirit from the Lord troubled him. Glory be to God's holy name. And Saul said unto Samuel, I have sinned, for I have transgressed the commandment of the Lord and thy words, because I fear the people and obey their voice. When there was disobedience in the life of Saul, the spirit of the Lord departed from him. Therefore, we've got to gain oil. We should be found people who have oil and save oil. Next, to whom is the anointing given? To the extent we wait in God's presence, the more and more we wait in God's presence, to that limit, the anointing is poured upon us. Jesus says in the Gospel, according to Saint Luke, and you have to tarry in the city of Jerusalem until you be endowed with power from on high. Therefore, they had to wait for the anointing for nearly ten days. Therefore, a child of God who has not received the anointing, not just for ten days, but they have to wait as long as they can until they receive the anointing. After that, also to receive new anointing again and again, we have to tarry in his presence. Now, we see the four things. There are many things, but I give you two important ones. To receive the grace. The fear of God. And humility. To receive anointing. We need obedience. And we got a tarry in his presence. These wise virgins failed to do all these four things during the dispensation of grace, for they were sleeping with the spirit of deep sleep. Today, many children of God, they are sleeping and have failed to come to God's presence. Without reading the Bible, they are sleeping. Not only that, after coming to God's presence also, they are sleeping in prayers. In Genesis, we see of a man of God who slept when he was offering sacrifices. When the Lord had asked Abraham to offer sacrifices unto him. Abraham asked the Lord how he had to offer sacrifices, and the Lord had taught him. Genesis, chapter fifteen, verse twelve. And when the sun was going down, a deep sleep fell upon Abraham, and low and horror of great darkness fell upon him. Verse thirteen. And he said unto Abraham, No, for surety, the dyed seed shall be a stranger in the land that is not theirs, and shall serve them, and they shall afflict them for hundred years. The Israelites, the generation of Abraham, will be afflicted in the land of Egypt for four hundred years; in the original language, it is written that they will be as beggars. That is what they also said, that they were able to eat in Egypt freely, the cucumbers, the melons, the leeks, and onions; a beggar need not buy anything for money. It was Abraham who was sleeping when he had to offer sacrifices unto God, the reason for his generation, the Israelites, to be in bondage. There are many reasons for the captivity of Israelites. First, it was a failure in the offerings that he had offered unto the Lord. All the reasons are found in the offerings that Abraham had offered. He failed to divide the birds.
About the second category of sleepers.
Where do we read that?
It is written about the people who sleep in Romans chapter thirteen. What is written in Romans chapter thirteen? They are sleeping. Verse eleven. And that knowing the time, that now it is high time to awake out of sleep, for now is our salvation nearer than when we believed.
Here we see the second experience of sleep. It is high time to awake out of sleep.
Here it is said that we have to know the time.
A man who is sleeping cannot know the time.
What is the time? And when we were saved, the salvation was near. When we say of salvation, there's a final salvation, it is his coming.
When we became believers and when we were saved,
we were nearer to the coming of the Lord, but after so many years of experience, we have still come nearer. Therefore, who are these group of sleepers? As Jesus says in Matthew chapter sixteen. And looking at the sky, they can say it will be a windy day or it will be a rainy day. They are able to discern all those things. Once again, Matthew chapter sixteen verses two and three. He answered and said unto them, when it is evening, ye say it will be fair weather, for the sky is red, and in the morning it will be foul weather today, for the sky is red and lowering. Oh, he hypocrites, ye can discern the face of the sky, but can ye not discern the signs of the times? If anyone is not able to discern the signs of the times, then he is in the spirit of sleep.
That is why in the Old Testament period also it is written in Jeremiah chapter eight verse seven.
Ayahayetilulna nare mudalai tan veleyayariyam kaatupuravum kokkum tagayvilan kuruviyam, taangal varathakka kaalathayariyam yen janangaloo kartarin nyayateyariyargalendu kartar urayikrara endu chol. Ay, the stock in the heaven knoweth her appointed times, and the turtle and the crane and the swallow observe the time of their coming, but my people know not the judgment of the Lord. The Lord God is comparing his people with the birds. This talk in heaven knoweth her appointed times. And the turtle and the crane and the swallow observe the time of their coming. But my people have no understanding. My people do not know the judgment. We do not have the revelation a crane has got. And the swallow has knowledge about the times, but we lack it. Today many people are in the spirit of deep sleep. In this dispensation of grace, those who had been in the spirit of deep sleep. Those who were not bothered about the oil. They will be left behind in the secret coming of Jesus and will become wise virgins. As they have already been once left behind in the secret coming of Lord Jesus, now they have become alert. Now they are awake. Now they are prepared. They are hardly waiting when will the bridegroom appear. Then in among the left behind group also there is another category. Not only did they sleep in the dispensation of grace, but they are still sleeping in the tribulation period. They did not have their knowledge and understanding that in this dispensation of grace, in the period of tribulation, we have to die as martyrs and have to be caught up, and they are sleeping even then. Such people won't have any redemption or salvation, they will be cast into hell. Therefore, you have to just discern and find out how great a matter sleeping is. I'm telling you about three different sleeps. First, those who are always sleeping physically. That too is dangerous. In the time we've got to pray. In the time we've got to praise the Lord. We see of a man who was sleeping when he was listening to the message. The message was not just for an hour. It was going on for hours. He was sitting upstairs on a terrace, and from there he fell down and died. Acts of opposals chapter twenty verse nine. He was preaching till midnight. For next day he had to go off from the place. He had to go somewhere else. Therefore, he asked the people to sit there in the upper chamber. And he was preaching till midnight. And upon the first day of the week, when the disciples came together to break bread, Paul preached unto them ready to depart on the morrow and continued his speech until midnight, and there were many lights in the upper chamber where they were gathered together, and there sat in a window a certain young man named Etigus being fallen into a deep sleep, and as Paul was long preaching, he sunk down with sleep and fell from the third loft and was taken up dead. We see many people working all night. For the sake of their job, they have been awake all through the night, and certain people just write down their lessons, they will be waking up all night. Our workers of God also, for sake of convention, if we ask them to stay awake all night and talk and chat, they will do that. When we ask them to sing also, they will be ready to sing, and when we ask them to work also, they will be ready to work. And when you are asked to listen to messages right through the night or to pray through the night, then you'll feel sleepy. He fell down from the third loft and was taken dead. But Paul brought him back to life. In the following verses. And even though that person fell down and died, he did not stop his message. He did not suspend his message. And message was continuing. What do we know from that? An experience of physically sleeping. Abraham slept in his body. When he was offering sacrifices to the Lord. And because of that, terror and darkness took hold of him. On the other hand, the Lord told him, your generation will be afflicted for four hundred years. Just imagine this, not just one or two years, the Israelites were afflicted for four hundred years. Glory be to God's holy name. Second, when he was sleeping, when listening to the message, he became dead. Glory be to God's holy name. This is the first type of sleep. We need a deliverance from this spirit of sleep. A person who is always sleeping in the body can never stay awake in the nights and kneel in prayer. What does Jesus say in Luke chapter twenty one verse thirty six? And even though that person fell down and died, he did not stop his message. He did not suspend his message. And message was continuing. What do we know from that? An experience of physically sleeping. Abraham slept in his body. When he was offering sacrifices to the Lord. And because of that, terror and darkness took hold of him. On the other hand, the Lord told him, your generation will be afflicted for four hundred years. Just imagine this, not just one or two years, the Israelites were afflicted for four hundred years. Glory be to God's holy name. Second, when he was sleeping, when listening to the message, he became dead. Glory be to God's holy name. This is the first type of sleep. We need a deliverance from this spirit of sleep. A person who is always sleeping in the body can never stay awake in the nights and kneel in prayer. What does Jesus say in Luke chapter twenty one verse thirty six? When you see all the things that come to pass in this earth. If you want to escape that hour of temptation. Luke chapter twenty one verses thirty five and thirty six. For as a snare shall it come on all them that dwell on the face of the old earth, watch ye therefore and pray always that ye may be accounted worthy to escape all these things that shall come to pass and to stand before the Son of Man. I know many saints who do not sleep at the daytime. Glory be to God's holy name. Without sleeping during the day, they are working for the Lord. Naturally, it is a tendency of a person to sleep at nights. There is a verse also. Those who sleep, sleep at nights. Generally, they sleep at nights. First, there's alone in chapter five verse seven. For they that sleep, sleep in the night, and they that be drunken or drunken in the night. Generally, people in the world sleep at nights. But today people of God, they sleep both during the daytime and the night. Glory be to God's holy name. What does the spirit of deep sleep do? And it leads you in a way so that you do not gain or save oil in your life. As we read in Luke chapter twenty one verse thirty six, to be counted worthy to stand before the Son of Man. To be caught up in a secret coming. We've got to watch and pray always. Only when you keep on praying, this grace will abound in you. Only if you keep on praying, you can receive the anointing. Dear child of God. Only by a prayer alive you can receive the fear of God. Only by your prayer alive you can receive that humility. Only by a prayer alive you can receive that obedience. And only if you keep on tarring in your prayer, you can receive that anointing. But today many are sleeping. Sleeping at the daytime, sleeping at night, sleeping in the meetings, and sleeping during prayer. They are physically sleeping. Sleeping in the prayers. Sleeping in the service. Glory be to God's holy name. Suppose a driver in a bus, or suppose you are driving a vehicle. If you just doze off for a minute, what will happen? Suppose you're driving, if you doze off for a second, what will happen? You needn't sleep for one hour while driving, no, you cannot do that. If you just sleep for a second is enough. Out of experience, I'm telling. When I was returning from the pastor's meeting. When I was ministering unto the Lord in Conore, I went along with the pastor for the pastor's meeting and was returning with him in the car. There's a great bridge over Bhavani. For just a second, I dozed off, and also the driver dozed off, and immediately we had a head-on collision with a great tackle lorry. We just slept for a minute or a second alone, but the driver was claiming to have long years of experience in driving. Our chief pastor, Pastor Lasters, has counseled us to sleep at night there itself and to start a journey in the morning. We started from Chennai, and he had advised us to stay back in the night at Salem and then start, continue a journey the next morning. And there the driver nodded his head in approval, but on the way he said that he had to go for an admission the next morning. This is just an ambassador car, but I've got an experience of driving great trailers also right through the night. He slept just a second. But God was gracious enough, he preserved us from death. A driver, if he sleeps off just for a second, that's enough. There will be imminent death. There will be great loss for the vehicle. Glory be to God's holy name. Dear child of God, in your spiritual life, you are sleeping for many hours. In your Christian life, you are always sleeping. At the time when you have to do the will of God. At the time you've got to suffer for the Lord and labor for the Lord. When you have to minister for the Lord. Sleeping, sleeping, and sleeping all the while. Glory be to God's holy name. And when Abraham slept, there was a great judgment for that. When the young man Etigus slept, he had died. But the saints prayed for him and once again revived him. Glory be to God's holy name. We can read that verse, he says, after embracing that man who had died, there is life in him. Those were words of faith. Acts of opposals twenty verse ten. At the last portion of verse nine, it is written, he fell down from the third loft and was taken up dead. He was taken up dead. But he was taken up dead, but by faith he said there was life in him. This is a physical sleep. A man who is physically sleeping will not have a prayer life. He will not give importance to prayer life. We need an experience of staying awake in prayer. We have to cry aloud unto the Lord both day and night. About that, Jesus is in Luke chapter eighteen. A life of praying both day and night. Verse seven. And shall not God avenge his own elect which cry day and night unto him, though he bear long with them. We have to pray both day and night. And the elect who pray night and day. Not all can pray night and day. That was why the wise virgins in this dispensation of grace, they did not pray night and day, and neither did they gain or save oil, that's why they have been left behind. This wise virgins, who were not bothered about the oil in the dispensation of grace and were found with the spirit of deep sleep. They could not sleep in the tribulation period. They became more alert in this tribulation period. They had very well known that there was just one more chance for them, and they had somehow made it to the coming of the Lord once again. Dear children of God, let none of us be like the wise virgins with the spirit of deep slumber in the dispensation of grace. The second sleep, that is what we read in Romans chapter thirteen, those who were sleeping not knowing the times. Suppose a man is physically sleeping. He's got a deep sleep. When it's raining outside, he won't be aware of that. At times when the alarm bell goes on also, he will not be able to listen to that. Suppose a snake also is going beside him, when he is sleeping, he won't be aware of that. If you're awake, you can watch it. If you're awake, you can see that. When a person is sleeping in a room, he can't know when a snake is crossing him. This is a thing that can take place when we are having a physical sleep. Now we are awake in the body. All of you are awake. But you are not able to know the signs that are taking place in heaven. You are awake. And what Jesus says in Matthew, are you not able to discern the signs of the times? Sun is going like a black sackcloth. And the moon also is darkening. Last year, a great chunk of stone fell from heaven to in Russia. But we know none of these things. In this way, there are many changes taking place both in heaven and earth. There are many changes taking place in the sea too. Even though all these things are happening. Jesus is going to come. I have to look up. I have to lift up my head. I have to gain oil. I do not have the fear of God in my life. There is no fear of God in my life. I am a man full of fraud, I don't have humility. I am stubborn without obeying. There is no obedience in me. I do not find time to wait for the Lord. We are waiting for so many things in this world. After all, to purchase two or five liters of kerosene, we are waiting in the ratio for us together. Glory be to God's holy name. Let us examine our lives. Similarly, in the world also, they'll be waiting in many places. Those who want to go abroad are waiting in the airport for three hours. The flight is going to take off only at seven, so let me go there at six fifty-five, no one will see so. If you want to go abroad, you've got to wait there some two or three hours ahead of the schedule. But now we do not have time to wait in God's presence. If you want to gain that oil, you've got to wait. In the prophetical book of Isaiah. But they that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength, they shall mount up with wings as eagles, they shall run and not be weary, and they shall walk and not faint. In this Christian life and in spiritual life, even though you run for long journeys, if you should be without fainting and weary. Even though you are walking much according to the truth, if you should not be weary. You need a new strength. Only by the anointing you get that strength. And for that, you've got to wait for the Lord. Those who that wait upon the Lord. But in this dispensation of grace, they have not gained this oil. They did not know the times. A great tribulation period is going to dawn. Today the Adha card is in practice. Very soon, it will be converted into a chip. Even in Tamil Nadu today, most of the people have got these cards. When seeing all these things, what should you do? You have got to discern the times. There is no oil in my life. I am without grace. I am without anointing. There is no spirit and no fire. Oh, my life is in a wretched state. And in this way, those who are not able to know the times are in the second category of sleepers. There is a third category of sleepers. Those who are in the same truth. Those who walk according to the flesh. In short, those who have got themselves separated from God. And when they join along with him, they will follow them. Even though the Lord wants them time, and again they won't be able to hear it, because they are the ones who are pretending to sleep. What do, where do we read about such a group? He says chapter five verse fourteen. Wherefore he said, awake thou that sleepest and arise from the dead, and cry shall give thee life. This is the third type of sleep. They are along with the dead. They are along with the dead. When we say of the dead, firstly are the sinners. A fellowship with the sinners. Having a fellowship with people who are burnt to different types of sins. A carnal relationship. A carnal friendship. First of all, sinners are dead. Second, backsliders. Those who do not live according to the truth. Those who do not obey the leaders. Those who do not have the fear of God. And having a fellowship and living along with such people. This is the third group of sleepers. What does the apostle say here? Awake thou that sleepest and arise from the dead. It's enough of having an association with the sinners. Enough of having association with the backsliders. Enough of having a life desiring carnal ties. You have to receive a life of conversing with the Lord. I and my God and my God and myself. And in between this relationship, do not give room for any other relationship. Now you listen to the testimony by the sister. In many occasions, I too have experienced that. The mistress of the family, she was suffering in the. The mistress of the family, she was suffering in the body, and at midnight for nearly one and a half hours, she was roaming in the room here and there, knowing not what to do, but the rest of the family were unaware of that and sleeping.
Oruvidhatla, avangi yarin disturbannavendu, naan avangi irundanga, idhathu veraalanda, allaray eliputturuppa, ool kathachuruppa.
In one way, it's good because she thought that she needed to disturb the rest of the people, there's some others, they've made everyone else in the family to rise up screaming aloud.
Idhala oru ragasyathavellinkulanga.
And you have to know a mystery in that.
Avangi elupama irundhalan, siri, elippi, allaray okkara vachalans, siri. Namoruvadiyavandu kastapparavali la, andha vedanini, namoralaadu, amanuvuivikina. Kudukkara kanaavana, pillaiya, anuvuivikyaavu mudiyadu.
She might have.
Sharepannamudiyadu, ni konjanuvuvi. La, kaalila umbadhu, balanthu varekyaa, andha kattivada vedanu, unakirukkato. Pananandhu, mune varekyanam, bhattukkara. Mune landhu, anju varekyapulla, bhuta pulla bakato. Raathilla, chinnapulla bakato, eppidi sharepannamudiyadu.
She might have suffered all alone, or might have asked other people in the family also to wake up and sit along with her, but one thing we have to understand, the person who is having the problem alone has to endure all the pain, they cannot give off the pain to other people to bear it for a certain time, or allow a certain time for everyone in the family to bear the pain that they are enduring, saying three to five, one child should bear it, and then five to seven, another child, and so on.
Etthiriyobayangaramana vyadi vandavodu, kada vaiditukundu, tanii oruvananga than anuvuva, var yaaradi sharepannala. Var yaar udavi seyyamudiyadu.
At times, when I was gravely sick also, I had shut my room behind me, and I've suffered all alone, I had not disturbed anyone else.
Eppidi udavi seyalam.
How can others help?
Oruvela, avangal elipuittu, viliththirindu, alla, jethu, mulangal, bhattu, jebikilam, andha jaba thilavu udavi seyalam, anadu vedanaya, avagurutharadha anuvuivikamudiyam.
Maybe if she awakes, wakes up other people in the family, they can awake, and they can kneel down and pray along with that person, but the suffering she alone has to endure.
Anavare, oruvadukkada vedanani, bangidamudiyam.
Only one person can partake that suffering.
Adi yaar.
Who's that?
Namadhyajivyadukkumaathrundu vedanani, bangidamudiyam.
Our God alone can partake that suffering.
Es, adirkasana putthukam, arvathimunradhiyara.
Isaiah, the prophet's book, chapter sixty-three.
Avarudhi, illaan, irukkathilavu, nerkappattar.
Onbadu. Aludhi, illaan, irukkathilam, avan nerkappattar, avade samuthin thudananaavu, avargalay rachitthar, aver thamada anbinimitamum, thamada paridavatini mitamum, avargalay meetu, puruvan naatkiliyallam, avargalay thooki sumandhavandhar.
In all their affliction, he was afflicted, and the angel of his presence saved them. In his love and in his pity, he redeemed them, and he bared them and carried them all the days of old.
Oru parasutthavan, vadi jivitha.
Saint prayed like that.
Orukkoliyaveda, bayangara vedanu, vyadi, romba kastappaliduthu thaar.
He was grievously sick, and he was suffering much in pain.
Appa or sunaraandurindhu vedanaya, vare, yaarteen, amangidamudiyadu.
He said to the Lord, I cannot share this pain with someone else.
Anai, enakaga silvila, illa, vedanini sumandhavittu.
But you have crossed, carried all the pain for me on cavalry.
Indha vedanini, nal, thangikodam, mudiyadu, alavukkakaradu.
Lord, this pain is unbearable.
Idha, ni, enno, oru, lappangidavendu, me, enna jivitha.
He prayed to the Lord, saying, Lord, you have got to share it with me.
Sambavittadu, enna thiriyamah.
Do you know what happened?
Andha nimidame, avadi vedanaya, avadi, ninga, kayangalirukkada, vedanaya, andha kayangalirukkada, vyadi, enka, enka, idhathu, enka, idhathu, anavana, vedanamantti illa, adu vedanaya, devaneyethukondar.
That very moment, he could feel the pain relieving him, for he had the wound and sickness everything, but the Lord took away his pain.
Vedaninall, thudithukundu, thukkame, illamalirundha, aver, indha jaba thukvirpadu, andha vedanaya, devaneyethukundu virpadu, andha vedanaya, thiriyamal, nal, thunginar.
He was squirming in pain without sleep because of that pain, and after this prayer, and the Lord had taken away the pain from him, he had a peaceful sleep.
Agave, illaan, irukkathilum, odukkathilum, palveer, prachchilmatilum, shodhilmatilum, kathar oruvare, namenaddakudiyavaraai, nammo oru, lappangidakudiyavaraai irukkara.
Therefore, in all her afflictions, in her distress, in her trials and temptations, the Lord alone is able to partake and share our feelings.
Katturiyae parasutthanamathukum inthakal. Katturiyae parasutthanamathukum inthakal.
Glory be to God's holy name.
Appa namadhyajivyathin, namidhanithu barbho ma.
Let's examine our lives.
Nittrayavittu yelumbavo.
Let us come out of a sleep.
Gananittrayin avi, namayesvin ragasyavargil, eduthukollapadadavan, namseethu idukkara.
The spirit of deep sleep does not allow us to be caught up in the secret coming of Lord Jesus.
Agave, devanukku, namakkor, niringina uravu thevai.
Therefore, we need a very close association with our God.
Manikanaka, manidhanadu, peyasudhu, niruthungal.
Stop talking with men for us together.
Devanoodu varavada aarumigal.
Start to talk with God.
Raakkalam, pagalkalam, adigamai, avaroodu peyasingal.
Both at daytime and nighttime, you have to speak much with God.
Avade, sattham, kedukkara varailum peyasingal.
You have to speak with him until you hear his voice.
Avar badal kodukkara varailum peyasingal.
Speak to him until he answers you.
Avar tolvigal, jayamai, maathrunkara varailum peyasingal.
You have to keep on speaking to him until he converts your failures into victories.
Abdi or baktani, naan bakaro.
We see of a saint like that.
Jakob.
It was Jesus.
Raakkalam illaan, jebithaan.
Through, right through the night, he prayed.
Raakkalam illaan, poradinan.
He had wrestled all through the night.
Raakkalam illaan, aludhu, avari, nokki, kenchinan, Oxya, banthadiyara, nalavasana.
Oxya, chapter twelve verse four, we see that all through the night, he prayed, and he put forward his supplication unto the Lord.
Porudhu viddindadu.
When it was daybreak.
Avar solrara, naan porudhu viddi, naan pogattunrara.
He said, it's daybreak, so let me go.
Katturiyae thudanana solrara, porudhu viddikiradu, naan pogattam.
The angel of the Lord said, it's daybreak, so let me go.
Ivay raakkalam illaan, aludhu irukkara.
He had prayed all night.
Raakkalam illaan, kenchirukkara.
And he had beseeched the Lord all through the night.
Oxya, panirundu naangge.
Oxya, chapter twelve verse four.
Avan thudananaavu, avarode poradimeerkundan, aludhu, avari, nokki, kenchinan.
Bodho.
Ay, he had bar over the angel, and prevailed, he wept and made supplication unto him.
Iravellan, poradinan.
He had prevailed all night.
Iravellan, aludhan.
He had wept all night.
Iravellan, avari, nokki, kenchinan.
All night, he had pleaded unto the Lord.
Kaalila, avar solrara, porudhu viddikiradu, naan pogattum, enndusanna.
In the morning, he said, it's daybreak, so let me go.
Ivay solrara, porudhu viddindha, enakkena.
He said, it may be daybreak, was that for me?
Porudhu viddindha, enakkena.
It's daybreak, what's that for me?
Naan mosambukkara, oru, irukkaranai.
I'm a deceiver.
Naan yethanai irukkaranai.
I'm a supplanter.
Naan manjikkara, oru, irukkaranai.
I'm a one who teases.
Enne Israela, ini maathruthavari, naan vidduvaadu illa.
Until you make me Israel, I'll not let you go.
Ni enne asuruditha, oru, naanu, me, vidduvaadu illa.
Until you bless me, I will not let you go.
Appudavara, oru, asurudikrara.
Then he blessed him.
Appudavara, oru, thottar.
And then he touched him.
Avan Israela, ay, maathrukkara.
He made him as Israel.
Israel, entral, jayali, devanadhattil, aalukkasiyaraman, prabhu.
When we say of Israel, it's called a prince, or a victor, or one who rules with the law.
Namil aarakankale, mudduva.
Let's all close our eyes.
Indha nittrayin avi, moonruthvidangalile, kirisiru, namakkula, entha vidhattil, kirisiru, enbadi, nidhanippo.
This spirit of sleep is working in three ways, and let us find out in which way it is working in our lives.
Solutthi valkile, yadaaila, oruvidhatla, kirisila, solutthi valkile, moonruthvidhatla, kirisila.
In the lives of certain people, it may be working in just one way, but in the life of certain others, it may be working in all the three ways.
Sariyathile thungikondukkara ma.
Are we sleeping in a body?
Jaba thile thungikondukkara ma.
Are we sleeping in sleep?
Barisalathu, thulavu thungikondukkara ma.
Are we sleeping when we are offering sacrifices?
Prasangata, kalkuma, aithigayupala, thungikondukkara ma.
And like, you tickers, are we sleeping when we are listening to messages?
Veelasiyamal thungikondukkara ma.
Are we sleeping without working?
Uliyam siyamal thungikondukkara ma.
Are we sleeping without doing the work of God?
Jaba nyarathile thungikondukkara ma.
Are we sleeping when the prayer is going on?
Nirbandhamana, nalavaro.
A wretched state.
Kayudappattu bodho.
We will be left behind.
Jaakkarayayir.
Beware.
Echchirikayayir.
Be cautious.
Viliththukkara valkatevai.
We need a life of staying awake.
Iravum pagal, yappodu, viliththukkara, jivituka, kenchu.
Let us beseech the Lord to give us a life whereby we are able to stay awake both day and night.
Paavam, vivachara paavam, eppidi or manidhanavari, kippodam, thadukkado.
As the sin of adultery hindures a person from being caught up in the coming of the Lord.
Oru koli bhadakathin, oru koli garanakoli singja bodho, andha paavam, avan, variki pogam, thaduthudukkara.
If a man murders another person, that's enough, that sin will never allow the person to be caught up in the secret coming of Jesus.
Vivachara paavamo, koli bhadakamo, ber, endhavudhu, periyapaavamo, valkile, illamarkala.
There may not be very great sincere life like the sin of adultery or murder.
Idha thookkamayakam, undhrudhal bodho, thookkathin avi, undhrudhal bodho.
The spirit of deep slumber, that alone is sufficient.
Nittrayvannakara, avi, undhrudhal bodho.
The spirit of deep sleep alone is enough.
Kayudappattu, andha puttiulla kanniigaya, maarano.
And we'll be left behind to become a wise virgin.
Kiruvin kaalathle thungikravargal, kayudappattu, puttiulla kanniigalai, ubathur kaalathle varukkara.
And those who have slept during the dispensation of grace will be left behind, and will come as wise virgins to the tribulation period.
Kiruvin kaalathle, nam thungaduruppa ma.
Let's not sleep during the dispensation of grace.
Es, lukka padanatadiyadli solugrara, soondupogamal, epodo, javamanne.
In Luke chapter eighteen, Jesus says, you have to pray always without fainting.
Iravum pagalum, javamanne.
Got to pray both night and day.
Lukka, iruvathun, mupathyarli, solugrara, manisagumana, gunbaga, irukka, yappodu, javamani, viliththu.
And in Luke twenty-one verse thirty-six, he says, that we've got to watch and pray always, to be found worthy to stand before the Son of Man.
Irundavudhu thukkamayakkam, kaalaththi ariyada vargalay jivu.
And second spirit of sleep is the ones who are not able to discern the times.
Agayathulla, naraki, kaalam, thirikaradu.
The stock in heaven is able to know the times.
Andadu solle, agayathulla, naragalukka, kaalam, thirikaradu.
Oh, the stock in heaven is able to find appointed times.
Kokkukkum, taiyavalan, gurivikkum, kaalam, thirikaradu.
The crane and the swallow is not able to know the times.
Andavare, enakkinda kaalaththi, paduththiriyavudiyavillaiye.
But Lord, I'm not able to discern those times.
Enjivyathile ennayillaiye.
There is no oil in my life.
Ennayillai, enkakara, oru, kavale illaiye.
I'm also not worried that there is no oil in my life.
Kathurukkabedukkara, bhaayamillaiye.
There is no fear of God.
Es, sukal kaanappattu, andha talmaillaiye.
The humility found in Jesus is not found in me.
Patthapadugalinaale, kristu, kilpadi, katturukkondara, enri, birayale, padikiro.
In Hebrews, we read that Christ learned obedience through the sufferings that he suffered.
Padu battu, padu battu, padu battu, es, kilpadi, katturukkondara.
And suffering, suffering, and suffering, Jesus learnt obedience.
Anai, indha, namukku, padu vadavu, mudiyala, kilpadi thulillai.
But today, we are not willing to suffer, and we do not have obedience.
Chinnakariyathukkakilpadiyavudiyavillai.
Even for a trivial issue, we are not able to obey.
Ho.
Go.
Va.
Come.
Idha sei.
Do this.
Indha or chinnakariyathukkakilpadiyavillaiye.
Even for a petty matter, you're not able to obey.
Nirbandhamana, mulivu, oru, pogaradu.
You're going to meet a miserable death.
Echchirikayayir.
Beware.
Pulumbai.
You've got to moan.
Kenchu.
Beseech.
Kadare.
Cry aloud.
Oppaari vaypayaaga.
And you have to bewail.
Andavare, andha ennayi tharo.
Lord, give me that oil.
Andha kilpadi, tharo.
Give me that obedience.
Kathurukkukaathurukkavudavi seyyo.
Help me to tarry for the Lord.
Raakkalangalina, kathurukkavudavi seyyo.
Help me to wait during the nights.
Reshanakadu, vay kathurukkada, paavamallai.
It's not a sin going and waiting in front of a PDS.
Adu tabarana, ninga, vay kathurukkada, thamavendu.
That's not a mistake, you have to wait there.
Unaruvadukkada, thamavendu.
Just for you to have an understanding.
Alindhubogarakariyathukkaaga, kathurukkaramay.
We are waiting for perishable things.
Abdi, ullaanam, manidhanakaga, kathurukkarama.
Are we waiting for our inner man?
Katturiyae samuthle, kathurukkarama.
Are we waiting in God's presence?
Ennayillaiye.
There is no oil.
Kiruvin kaalathle, ennayi kurithu, nam kavaleppadukkara thillaiye.
We are not worried about the oil in this dispensation of grace.
Tivatti irukkada.
There is a lamp.
Allarukka, tivatti irukkada.
All of us have got lamps.
Anai ennayillai.
But no oil.
Abhishekam, pettavittaya.
Are you anointed?
Pettravittain.
Yes.
Etthunavarsaachi.
How many years?
Muppatavarsaachi.
Thirty years.
Abhishekam, enkara, ennayirukkara.
Have you got the anointing that is the oil?
Illai.
No.
Aradhilundha, avil, narmamudiyala.
I mean, I come to the service, I'm not able to get filled in the spirit.
Uvasavangalundha, avil, narmamudiyala.
Coming to the fasting praise, I'm not able to get filled in the spirit.
Kathurukkavudhalundha, avil, narmamudiyala.
Coming to the tarrying meetings, not able to get filled in the spirit.
Tivatti irukkada.
There is a lamp.
Abhishekam, pettavittain, enkara, payarirukkara.
And we've got a name that we are anointed.
Etthunavarsamachchi, enkara, payarirukkara.
And we've been anointed for so many years, such a name we've got.
Ennayillaiye.
But no oil.
Abhishekam illaiye.
No anointing.
Kiruvayillaiye.
No grace.
Indha kiruvin kaalaththi, alachyamannadu.
Do not despise this dispensation of grace.
Moonraavudhu, pinmaathrakarana, aikya.
Third, a fellowship with the backsliders.
Paavigaloda aikya.
A fellowship with the sinners.
Paavasthalal, jiviparulada aikya.
A fellowship with people who live in sin.
Maamsathle, jiviparulada aikya.
A fellowship with people who live in the flesh.
Maamsikamana, thodurbugal.
And cardinal ties.
Andhalanga, thodurbugal.
Secret ties.
Adi vittu veli, evaru ma.
Let us come out of all those.
Namadhyajivyathal thala, dumudiyadu.
It's not possible with our own strength.
Kathurun, oo, kinnam, kuukkuraluduva.
We have to cry aloud unto the Lord.
Abathka kaalathle, nirookkai kuuppa.
Call unto me in the day of trouble.
Indha yelai kuupittham.
This poor man cried.
Moolabasile, kanniiruttam, angilathil, vandhakka. Indha yelai, kanniiruttam.
This is written rightly in the English language.
Kanniirudda.
You have to shed tears.
Kanniirudda.
Shed tears.
Alindhubora karingsaka, kanniirudukkara.
You're able to shed tears for perishable things.
Parichila, marku koruntha, kanniirudukkara.
If you get less marks in exams, you shed tears.
Parichila, vailana, kanniirudukkara.
If you fail in the exams, you shed tears.
Oru porul, kaanamal, poivuttal, kanniirudukkara.
If you lose a thing, you shed tears.
Alindhubogarakariyankalukka, kanniirvarukkada.
You're able to shed tears for perishable things.
Namadhyajivyathin, nirbandhamana, varthin, nidhitu, kanniiruduva.
And remembering the miserable state of a life, you've got to shed tears.
Kathunamukkavivisivara.
May the Lord bless us.
Kannirodhe, katthave, undan mugam, teeduve.
Tanne thadagavai, maaru din kandalu, vinnapam kettiduvee. Tanne thadagavai, maaru din kandalu, vinnapam kettiduvee. Nalliro, viro, ndendan, ulasai, pullapolu, chuvino, padathil. Nalliro, viro, ndendan, ulasai, villapolu, chuvino, padathil. Kalidu, viro, indan, veendhal, kaalilai, nindai, kenchuvee. Kalidu, viro, indan, veendhal, kaalilai, nindai, kenchuvee. Tanne rodhe, katthavi, undan mugam, teeduvee. Tanne rodhe, katthavi, undan mugam, teeduvee. Tanne thadagavai, maaru din kandalu, vinnapam kettiduvee. Tanne thadagavai, maaru din kandalu, vinnapam kettiduvee. Thuru thielin, kaniyavayu.
Amen.
Irothi, karathu, dhan, kaangiru. Thuru thielin, kaniyavayu. Irothi, karathu, dhan, kaangiru. Virudha, vaagal, in, kaniyuvee. Iruvayal, innai, thanguvee. Virudha, vaagal, in, kaniyuvee. Iruvayal, innai, thanguvee. Thuru thielin, kaniyavayu.
Amen, aduva.
Irothi, karathu, dhan, kaangiru.
Jesus. Kanniiravaya, tharavatthu. Nittrayin, aar, vadiyavattu varo. Enne vadiyavattu varo.
Virudha, vaagal, in, kaniyuvee.
Na, moonruthavana, nittrayin, aar, vadiyavattu varo.
Thanguvee. Virudha, vaagal, in, kaniyuvee. Iruvayal, innai, thanguvee. Tanne rodhe, katthavi, undan mugam, teeduvee.
Jesus. Na, moonruthavana, nittrayin, aar, vadiyavattu varo.
Tanne thadagavai, maaru din kandalu.
Marithovavu, yelundru, udavi seyya. Thungukkara, nal, vilithu, marithovavu, yelundhu, udavi seyyo. Kaalaththi, ariyada, oru, yene, mastra.
Tanne rodhe.
Sariyathile, thungukkara, thukkada, asurudhiyavada.
Teeduvee. Tanne rodhe, katthavi, undan mugam, teeduvee. Tanne thadagavai, maaru din kandalu, vinnapam kettiduvee. Tanne thadagavai, maaru din kandalu, vinnapam kettiduvee. Tanne thadagavai, maaru din kandalu, vinnapam kettiduvee. Tanne thadagavai, maaru din kandalu, vinnapam kettiduvee.